Welcome into Exeter TV. The meeting will be starting shortly. While we wait, let's learn more about Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels available on Comcast Channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAA 16 and can be found on Channel 13 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter bi-weekly report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Exeter, and welcome to the July 25, 2022 Exeter Select Board Meeting. Good evening to my colleagues on the board, respective town staff, those in attendance, and those of you watching at home. I'd like to start the meeting by introducing the Select Board to my right, Select Woman Levy Roundtree Olaf, good evening.
Hello, everyone.
And the Vice Chair, Select Woman Molly Cowan, good evening.
Hi, everyone.
And our Clerk, Select Woman Julie Gilman, good evening.
Good evening.
And Select Woman Nancy Belanger, good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
Our Town Manager, Mr. Rustine, good evening.
Good evening.
And our Recording Secretary, Joanna Bartel, good evening. And my name is Nico Papakos and Dees. We do not have any board interviews this evening, so we'll jump right into public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to come in and weigh in with the Select Board with any comment. We do ask, though, if your comments are relative to anything on the agenda, that you wait until it comes up. I'll pause for a moment. And seeing no public comment, we'll move on. There are no official proclamations or recognitions. However, I was remiss at our last meeting last week, and I apologize. I did want to recognize the Extra Arts and Culture Commission, who'd come before the Board previously for the Select Board to accept a $20,000 grant to make improvements to the statue at Founder's Park. And of course, we accepted the grant. The work has been done, and the Extra Arts and Culture Commission was instrumental in getting that work done. It looks beautiful. If you haven't gone by and seen it, please do. And again, thank you and congratulations to that committee for getting that done in a very short period of time. Next, we have the approval of our regular meeting minutes from, excuse me, our July 18, 2022 meeting. I have one amendment, but I'll pause and see if there are any other revisions or amendments. Okay, seeing none. Joanna Lane, the grant writer on the CDBG Housing Community Development Plan, wanted to add noted there were informational documents available. And with that, I would entertain a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of July 18, 2002 as amended.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. We do not have any appointments this evening, so we'll jump right into our discussion, action, and items. With us this evening to talk about, give a presentation on poll pads, we have our Town Clerk, Andy Kohler, Town Moderator, Kate Miller, and the Supervisor of the Checklist, Vicky Nortick. Good evening.
Sort of a threesome here. Thank you. So we're here to talk about a new innovation to help us speed up the voting process for, we hope, the first town election in 2023. So we're not trying to rush it into this fall's elections, which are coming up shortly. But as folks know, when they come to check in as voters, they find their name in the alphabet, they look at the tables. Sometimes the long lines are really long where they need to go, and there's a long wait. Other times, it's quicker. But sometimes it can take a long time for voters to get through that process. And we have wonderful patient ballot clerks who check people in. We have wonderful supervisors of the checklist to register voters that day if they are unregistered and they want to vote, or if they have name changes and things like that. So there's quite a lot of stuff that happens. And we've been doing the voter check-in with very old-fashioned paper voter checklists and different colored pens and rulers and all that kind of stuff. And it works. It's very effective. But it's busy. There's a lot of information that's coming from voters and especially undeclared voters who maybe choose a Republican or a Democratic ballot for things like the fall elections. And sometimes it takes a little while to get through the process. There is now an electronic option in which the town checklist, which is stored, and you ladies chime in if I get this wrong, on the Election Net system, which is a secure voter database that all the communities in New Hampshire use. So that information is our, the town's portion of it, is our checklist. And all the changes are made by hand and then are later updated on the checklist. The poll pads are things that look like iPads. There's a ballot clerk who staffs a position with the poll pad. The poll pad is facing the voter. The voters don't need to pick a line because the entire checklist is in every one of those poll pads. So you can go anywhere, which speeds things up enormously in terms of the check-in process. Folks still need to show a photo ID so that the ballot clerk can ensure that that is the person that's checking in, that they really are the person they say they are. If they have a New Hampshire driver's license and they're willing to have the ballot clerk scan it, the clerk will ask them, they can scan it with the poll pad, which will immediately bring up their voter information from the Election Net checklist that is stored in the poll pad. So it's very quick. And so there's no finding the name and checking and which street is it and stuff like that. If the person doesn't have a New Hampshire driver's license or doesn't want to have it scanned, then they can just give their name once the ballot clerks figure out they really are the person they say they are. And then that name can be put in and pull up their voter information. That's it in terms of the checking in. There's a question about is there an address change? If it's an undeclared voter, do they want a Democratic or Republican ballot if there's a partisan ballot? And then once that's answered, there's a receipt that's printed out like a grocery store receipt that has the voter's information on it. So if there's been an address change, that's a chance for the voter to immediately see it and ensure that it's correct. So no more, even though our ballot clerks do a good job, handwritten, possibly less easy to read, address changes, and the voter can check it. If we have a vision impaired voter, they similarly would bring an ID, and that would be either scanned or they'd give their name. If there are changes, they can give those changes to the clerk in terms of an address change, and the clerk can read that back to the voter to ensure that it's correct. Or if the voter has a companion with them, that person can read that. So that is the first part. And it's likely to be much quicker than it's taken me to describe it to you. The person who's been checked in as a voter then takes the receipt to a table that has other ballot clerks who have stacks of ballots, and they're color-coded if it's a partisan ballot, and they hand them the correct ballot and usher them over to the voting booths. So it's a, and they collect, they swap the receipt for the ballot. So we're left at the end of the evening with a bunch of receipts. Now, because we are not relying for all purposes on the electronic system that's created, New Hampshire law requires that we maintain contemporaneously, like really contemporaneously, a paper checklist. So there will be ballot clerks working away like elves in a workshop, updating that information from those receipts onto the paper checklist so that if, God forbid, there's a power outage or something like that, these are electronic devices, although they're not connected to the Internet. They're on a secure Ethernet connection tied together. If there's a power outage within probably 15 or 20 minutes, the checklist can be finished updating with everybody who's come through. We have a pause, then we pull out that paper checklist, we spread it out, we have the red and blue pens and the rulers, and we do it the old-fashioned way. And we are required to maintain a paper checklist for every election. So that will be maintained essentially in real time throughout the voting day. As people hand in their receipts, we'll have one ballot clerk who's charged with collecting those, alphabetizing them, and then getting them to the clerks who are working to input that information onto the paper checklist. So we have it pretty well covered in terms of meeting the legal requirements. The New Hampshire Ballot Law Commission has approved this device. The RSA is now covered dealing with poll pads and the requirements like for maintaining a paper checklist and all that kind of stuff. If there are new voters or voters who have had name changes, then they are directed over to the supervisors of the checklist. Vicky, do you want to talk about what they would do?
So in a normal election, if a voter has a name change or if they're a new voter to the town of Exeter, they have to meet with the supervisor of the checklist. At that time, they will fill out and are still required to meet all of the regulations to vote. So your ID, your age, your domicile, as well as your citizenship. Just a reminder, Real ID is not your proof of citizenship. We need naturalization papers, birth certificate, or a passport. So I'll put that plug out there tonight. And then, so they complete the application. Even name change has to fill out the entire documentation. Then we would physically add the voter, just their name and their address and their party affiliation. That's it. It doesn't add them to our checklist, it adds them to the electronic polling book. So once that happens, it's probably about a 90-second delay for information to then port over to the next device that people would check in with. And then they would hand over their receipt, get their ballot, just like everybody else. And then the backend, so to Kate's point about keeping a paper checklist along with the electronic polling books, if anything happens, we have to be ready in 10 minutes, per the RSA, to flip over to paper. So that check-in with the ballot clerks has to be happening all throughout the day. So I just want to make sure that people are aware of that.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Vicky. So for that reason, we will have ballot clerks who will be sitting at tables with the poll pads. And we're thinking that probably the setup that would work for the town would be 10 poll pads, having one or two of them with the supervisors of the checklist, so they can be putting folks in as they arrive. And then the rest, excuse me, either all of them, maybe keeping one in reserve with ballot clerks who are checking people in. We can swap those in and out of their various roles during the voting day. So if we need to put an additional one in service, we can. If something happens with one, we can take it out and put in another one. We can pull one of those and dedicate it to processing absentee ballots. So there's a slightly different mode for processing absentee ballots. And then we can put it back into the regular voter check-in. So they're somewhat flexible in terms of the way they're being used. The company that we would use is LHS out of Salem, New Hampshire. They're local. They maintain our vote tabulation machines, the AccuVote. We heard a presentation from them, and it sounded like the coolest thing since sliced bread. And then especially my veteran ladies said, well, we want to hear from the people in New Hampshire that are already using this. So a number of towns are, all of Rhode Island is, there are several other states that have adopted poll pads. But we wanted to hear specifically from the folks using the LHS system in New Hampshire. So we had a Zoom conference with folks from Barrington and London Dairy, I think. Is that right?
Dairy.
Dairy. Thank you. Dairy. And heard from moderator, clerk, and supervisor of checklist about their experiences. And they were very positive about LHS and the support that they provided, their training, their ability to troubleshoot if something happened on a particular election day. That apparently hasn't been the case with companies that are not based in New Hampshire, so having a local company that we already have a relationship with seems to be a big plus. There's an option, excuse me, to either rent these devices or buy them. And I leave the consideration up to the Board, to the Budget Advisory Committee. It looks to me like it's sort of a break-even arrangement. So it may be a preference of whether we prefer to own versus rent. So at the six-year point, it would essentially break even. There's a rental cost for each device. If we rented everything, it would be $5,500 for, is that per election or per year?
Per year.
Per year. So that's good. If we did it as a purchase, the initial outlay would obviously be much bigger. It'd be $18,650. And that would include the poll, the 10 poll pads, something called a cradle point, which is what connects things via Ethernet, so all of them are daisy chained together. There'll be a lot of extension cords and lots of those cord floor coverings to keep people from tripping on them. And then if we are purchasing them, there is a software update each year. So that cost is not insignificant. And I put that into the sort of table of costs at the back of my memo. So it ends up being a much, obviously, bigger outlay if we purchase stuff upfront, but we own the devices at that point. We know we've got them, so it isn't a question of would we not be able to obtain them if we wanted to rent them one year? On the other hand, the rental cost is a much smaller outlay each year.
I think it's per election, though, because...
Oh, then that's going to be a lot more expensive.
Yeah. Because if we're renting 10 polls for an election, if we have pre-elections, that's $15,000.
Okay. So it's a lot cheaper to own these than it is to rent them. And then is the annual cost really an annual cost or is it per election? I think it's just annual, right?
The annual maintenance fee is just, it's just annual.
Okay. So there is a big difference. I was thinking that it was so equivalent, it didn't really make sense. But it looks like it is a lot cheaper because there are some years when we have lots of elections. So when we have a presidential primary, a town election, a state primary, general election primary, and then a general election, that's four.
Twenty, twenty, all over.
I can't wait. I can't wait. Bring it on. So it would be more cost-effective to purchase them. It is a bigger nut upfront, but it's less expensive, probably over like a couple years. Instead of taking six years to break even, it's probably more like three or four.
So that definitely makes sense. And it could go one of two ways, right? Five or six-year life expectancy, they could live eight to 10 years. But then again, we don't know. I mean, has there been enough, you know, enough other towns and municipalities that have had them that long? We don't know. I mean, they could go...
It started since 2017. The RSA was created. So we don't have that historical data.
Right.
And I don't know if the ones in other parts of the country, because there's a nice colored map that I think Andy provided, which shows a lot of states that are now using poll pads. I don't know if that is this brand or this particular one.
Massachusetts started using it in 2016 at the presidential election.
Yeah. So we don't have a long history.
Not a long history, right.
We really don't know if they're going to go much beyond that six-year estimate, but that was LHS's estimate of five to six years.
Based on the equipment.
Sure.
There an iPad.
Yeah. So then the question comes in two or three years, do they come back and say, well, we've upgraded?
Oh, of course they will.
Now you have to buy these. Will these still be...
My guess is that this company, because, I mean, we can certainly ask them that question, but we've had such a long relationship. Those AccuVote machines are old, so we've been working with them for a long time. And I don't think they would try to pull a fast one, frankly. But I think it's a good question to ask.
We did hear from Brenda, who is the person that showed us the poll pad. And I sent her an email and asked her what the life expectancy was for the poll pad and for the cradle. And she said the cradle can be updated every several years, depending on the service provider, and usually come with some sort of buyback discount. Poll pad life expectancy depends on the iO West version versus the app version. Typically, the hardware can last five to six years. That being said, as long as you continue to pay for your software support fees annually, you will only need to upgrade the hardware and not the software. So, and the hardware ranges from $310 to $550.
And in terms of what this gains for us, it helps a lot with the voter experience. Some people want to come in and vote. They try to do it before going to work or after work or whatever with kids, and sometimes it's really a challenge. And if we can lift one hurdle out of the way, I think that helps a lot. It makes, I think, my life easier as moderator because the flow is quicker and people don't get bottled up and frustrated. But I think it doesn't change really the number of staff we're going to have there because we're going to need the ballot clerks to be interfacing with voters. We're going to need some of them to be putting in data onto that paper checklist, one of them as a runner, and we'll need a couple shifts of all those folks as we do now because it's a long voting day. And for the supervisor of the checklist, it's actually more work because our state hasn't fully embraced the electronic experience from beginning to end. So the reports that go to the Secretary of State can't just be uploaded from the poll pads. Theoretically, that's possible, but I think, but it's not happening.
Yeah. The one thing, the one thing I don't understand just yet is because we have to keep a paper checklist, I believe that is the certified checklist, and that's the one I'm going to have to verify against all the receipts and also the physical printout from the e-polling pads. So it is more work for us, and we also still have to enter all the new voters. And then we also have to then go back and update everybody's name as well as everybody's address. So there's still all that work on the end. However, it makes it more accurate, particularly in primaries. We have ballot clerks, God bless them. We could not run our elections without them. They are saints in my mind. They miss what ballot they gave you, or they just check, they don't cross your name off. So we, the supervisors, have to basically solve that mystery when we're checking people, scanning in our checklist.
So I will say that in the future, according to Brenda, she said that they, the state is current, has hired a company to build a hub so that the towns can take that information from the polling pads, from a stick with a flash drive, and load it into Election Net. And it'll all be loaded up, so we won't be scanning all of that. So until that gets done, it is going to be a little bit more work for the checklist
So I think everything you said is correct in terms of the voting, the voting process that makes it easier for the voters.
Yes.
It streamlines that process, makes it easier for you to do your job. I think you're right. It's going to be more work, particularly, Vicky, for your department, and you may need additional staff. I mean, that's, you might. And you said that this was not Internet-based, correct?
That's correct. It's not connected during the voting day to the Internet. That's why we're using the Ethernet.
So there's no way like this could get after...
Well, they're using Wi-Fi.
Okay.
But it's a closed network.
Correct. It's not Wi-Fi. We, we're not asking, our voting place is the Talbot Gem, and I'm sure that wouldn't have robust enough Wi-Fi, and it's not secure enough. So rather than trying to build a separate thing, Internet system that would be safe enough. You know, the Election Net is Internet-based, but it has password protected, so it's very limited in terms of who can get into it. You know, is it safe? I would say yes. Is it totally protected from anyone getting in? I don't know that any of us are, but I think it's as safe as anything is.
Questions and thoughts from the Board?
I talked to the town manager in Bedford. They were one of the trial towns, cities. And the first time they used it, he just loved it. He thought it was like the best...
It's like sliced pie?
Yeah. Pretty close. The best election process he'd gone through ever. So I'm excited that we have an opportunity here.
I just want to say one thing, and that is, we don't know what they have in store when we get the system in the future. I am going to assume, I know we're not supposed to, but I'm going to assume that eventually, when we do have to get new voting tabulators, that this product is going to be related to that product so that it will all work together. So at the end of the night, we're not here until nine or 10 o'clock or later, you know, trying to come up with the numbers. So that's a big plus.
Select Woman Belanger?
So I can't remember now how many months ago it was that I came to the demonstration, and I was excited through the whole process. So I think this is a wonderful idea, a little costly for an initial investment, but I think it would be worth it.
Select Woman Roundtree Olaf?
I think it's worth it. The only issue that I have is what you guys mentioned at the end about the security. So other than that...
Nice concern.
Yeah. I mean, it's a, so...
It's a deep concern for myself as well, given how the state of New Hampshire is such a paper state. Secretary of State really hasn't signed off on it. He hasn't made a decision. It's basically the voting committees that are making the decisions, and they're making RSA's and getting those through. So we're kind of a guinea pig.
Right.
Much like Dairy and the other towns that have started to use it. My concern is it's going on a thumb drive. Anything on a thumb drive, I mean, I work for a software company. We're told our thumb drives are like nonexistent on any Apple product. So I don't know how to, you know, how people that it's secure. It is. That's what they tell us. We give them a document, they upload all the information, and then we have it on our polling pad. So it is a concern. We will also have to be sure that we have something at the high school that is only for us. We also need to put a high-speed printer in because for ballots, if we need to reprint ballots, as we just experienced in our last election. So there is a significant investment that way for enhancing our technology to support if we go to the e- if we go to the e-polling pads. I, I mean, I'm not against it, I just have hesitation and personally, not as a supervisor or checklist, if I step out of that role, personally, I'm concerned because the Secretary of State doesn't necessarily support it. And if he did, we would have it in all of our towns, so.
Select woman Farrow?
There are a couple things that I'm wondering, especially if there is a scenario in which the legislative body decides to ban something like this, like that would be a concern.
Yeah.
I am also concerned about like human error, right? So how much more reliable is a system like this versus the supervisors of the checklist who, I imagine, you know, sometime, like they're tired or they give the wrong ballot or they, you know, you checked the wrong person off, you know? I know counting ballots for myself, I think it's much more secure to have the machine do it because I've, you know, we've, I've made us sit there and count the ballots, I don't know how many times, just to make sure that we're counting.
So the e-polling pad doesn't eliminate the ballot box, the?
No, 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 I know. I'm just, I'm just saying like there is room if you're, if it's a long day and there's, so I think that this, you know, if it's voter.
It's more, for me, it's more less voter error than, it's more less ballot clerk error.
Right, so it's, it's, so there's two people checking it versus really just the one, right, okay. So that, and, you know, so I guess I'm weighing the two things because I do think that there is, this system sounds really secure, it seems like there is going to be, it's going to make the voting process better, which, you know, hopefully we're just increasing our numbers of voters rather than decreasing. The, the concern that I do have is like something happening in the legislature or for some reason we are not allowed to use this technology. And here we've spent money and invested in it.
So the law in New Hampshire is rather complicated. So voting devices are approved by the Ballot Law Commission, it's this special commission, remarkably. And they are the ones who are yet, have yet to figure out the new vote tabulating machines that we're all waiting for them to come up with.
Right.
And we are not on the bleeding edge of this, there have been some other towns that started earlier, Milford, I think, was one of the earlier ones. They used a different company and that's where we got the feedback that maybe if it's not, you know, that there are friends here in New Hampshire who are servicing you, you're not going to get the love that you might if it was the people we already know. So that was feedback that we took in terms of picking the company. It's a wild world, so I can't say that things aren't going to happen with the legislature, but we have an RSA in place that approves these and sets out the requirements, we have the Ballot Law Commission saying they're okay. I think the Secretary of State is being cautious. And I'm hoping that this will eventually, you know, win folks over because I think it is an improvement. What can be very hard, and I've sat occasionally at the check-in clerk place, is when you've got especially a line and you've been there for hours and people are coming at you and, you know, you grab the wrong color pen or you check out the wrong name or you don't put the address incorrectly or you don't write it or you forget this or the other thing, there are fewer things to forget because it scans the ID for those people who are willing to have it scanned, they just give a name and it pulls it up automatically that way. So it's, it's, there's less room for error and for the folks who are then taking the information from those receipts and putting it onto the paper checklist that night, they're doing it in a different location. We're not going to have them in the middle of the sort of busy, noisy voter check-in place, they'll still be in the public area, but it will be in a quieter spot where they're, they're just working away and it's less distracting, it's less easy to get distracted. So I think that the, the number of human errors in the putting in of information and the checking off and all that kind of stuff is likely to go down.
Yeah.
Because of those factors. And it's kind of a combination of different things that I think will help that. Not that our system is terrible.
No, I, I know.
Just to have it be correct.
It, well, and I've experienced that after a long day, you know, 12 plus hours and then you're trying to count the votes and it's almost impossible. And so I also am of the opinion that poll workers are unsung heroes and so I want to make it as easy and painless as possible and make sure that our systems are as, as accurate as they possibly can be.
Can I follow up?
Please.
Please. So as a ballot clerk, when I'm not doing it, as a select for member, I volunteer for every election. It is stressful for the ballot clerks, it's also stressful for our residents who come to vote when they're stuck in a line. And Andy does a great job trying to balance, you know, the lines and things like that. So I, that's the part I love the most about this, I really understand and appreciate from that perspective. I'm a little concerned now though, because you two are saying not different things. So if our election commission is allowing these to be used, I need to understand, can our Secretary of State override them? Do we know that?
So I, the, the Ballot Law Commission has the approval of the devices.
Okay.
But the Secretary of State has his or her own authority in terms of the reports that they receive and require. So it's, it's really a question of are they wanting to update the manner in which they're getting those reports or not?
Or accept the data for that. So we have backup on the paper, we'll still have that. So either way.
Right.
I'm not concerned about that. And even if.
If you read the legalese of the RSA, it basically states that you have to perform your duties as we normally do.
Yes.
So that's why we have to keep a separate, second checklist.
So the thumb drive, even though you have some concerns over it, and I understand those, we still have the paper backup.
You have to, yes.
Exactly, well, I want other people to understand that all who listen to this.
Yeah, so the file that is being exported onto that is a CXV, I'm assuming, that goes onto the thumb drive out of ElectionNet, goes onto the thumb drive and then they get the thumb drive and they preload all of the devices for us. And then we have our checklist. So there's no way for malicious intent to happen because the connection of the internet, they would physically have to go into ElectionNet, which is not online during the election.
I think it's important for people to understand.
Yes, no, I appreciate that clarity.
Yeah.
So yes, so, because we physically then have to go back and we then put all that information to ElectionNet. So the e-polling devices are really just gathering data.
Yes.
That's it.
And, and we're very fortunate, I think, in New Hampshire where we have backup over backup over backup, so.
We, we can have a really big bonfire in New Hampshire.
We really can.
We love our paper and thank God for our trees, seriously.
I know, it's, it's a tough balance, but it's secured. If there's questions.
And we read the RSA, it, it is extremely specific that you have to also register people the same way and they still have to show all the proofs. And if they don't have those proofs, then there's affidavits that still need to be signed. So all of your normal duties of going to the polling, it just make, it's less impact for the voter. They're able just to come in, scan, grab their ballot and go. Gone are the days of having coffee while you're talking to your ballot clerk.
Yeah.
I'm going to be honest, it's going to be more transactional than it is a visitation.
Yeah, thank you for helping me to, just clarify that.
One other question, I know there's the concern, and I'm with you on the, having all the data on the thumb drive, are we going to be sending that to Concord via sheriff or something like that?
It goes straight, it doesn't go to Concord, it goes to the company that owns the polling pads that we're buying the software from. So what happens in between, they say it's in an air gap machine, I, but we're still on Wi-Fi to connect those three things. But again, even though they're connected together and using Wi-Fi, there's no way for that data to get changed because it's like, it's a read file, is really what it is. So the only data that gets changed is if physically the voter says, I need to change my address. And obviously they have to still be in Exeter to make that change, so, but yeah.
Okay, thank you.
The Russians cannot get into our checklist, I promise you that one thing.
Important distinction.
So we would need your folks' approval, the advisory budget committee, and obviously the attorneys will need to look at their contract and all that kind of good stuff, so.
So you're, you're aiming for, for 2023?
Yes.
Town election in March 2023? And Mr. Dean, have you been sharpening the pencil down there?
Yeah, so I, you know, in order for us to be prepared for the town election, which happens in March, we wouldn't, in my mind, we wouldn't put this into the 2023 budget because we need the, we need the polling pads before then.
Correct, because it's to train and show to the public.
So that's why I was, I was going to suggest that we use ARPA funds to fund the first year startup. So that would be the 10 poll pads with the receipt printer and the initial setup cost and then the cradle point. So that's 18,650.
That's the purchase?
What's that?
That's the purchase?
Yes.
Okay. Madam Moderator, how much turnaround time do you need to order them?
I don't know. Andy, do you know how much lead time the LHS needs from us? And obviously our attorneys need to.
I am not sure about the lead time, but I mean, I can find out from Brenda tomorrow.
Okay.
They know, they know that we're thinking about this, so I'm guessing it's doable on their end, assuming we move along with it.
So would it be worth considering, I mean, it's obviously more cost effective to purchase, but where this can't go before the BRC for 2023, would it be worth considering renting or leasing for a year to have less of an impact on the budget and our ARPA funds, which are quickly dwindling? And it would also give you an opportunity to decide whether you like it?
Right, 2023 is a great test time because it's a year ahead of the, of the election.
Right.
So that's good. And if we rent it for a year, I'm pretty sure the prices will be comparable, they'll probably go up, but probably be relatively comparable if the town decided to purchase for, in the 2023 budget for 2024, but giving us time to try it out in 2023. I wouldn't want to try it out in 2024.
No, 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 no. No, and that's, that's the perfect scenario to, to really debut it. And, and then, Mr. Dean, that would give you time to put that in as a budget item line for the '24 budget.
Yes, I would agree. We, we would, we could take the 5,500 from the current elections budget, which has 23,000 in it.
I mean, that, that.
Don't forget, you still have two more.
Understood.
But the ARPA funds are, you know, I mean, and I understand, if we were, if we decided we wanted to purchase it now, then obviously we could use those, but I mean, I think this, this is a, I don't know, I just think it's a more cautious way to proceed, but also not interrupt the success that it could bring.
I, I think also we could, it wouldn't hurt to see if, in the, in the one year leasing contract, we could have language that if we buy, within that one year, we could do it at the same price.
That's a possibility too, yeah.
That they're offering.
We'll see about that, yeah.
I just have a question, it encouraged me on reading the memo about deliberative session and how these would be used there, or would they?
Oh, that's such a good question. Same thing, I mean, when you check in at the, check the supervisor, they're just checking you off the, off the list, they're not handing you out anything except for a little card, but you could do the polling pad is the same thing, you just.
Okay.
Ask them to scan their driver's license and it would, you know, print out a ticket or not. You know, it would, it would just make sure that the, at the end of the day of the deliberative session, when we print out the report, it would give us a list of all the people that were at the deliberative session, which is very good when you're trying to do the minutes because sometimes you don't get everybody's name right.
Okay, great.
Yeah, it's less of a crush at the deliberative session, as exciting as that day is, there are fewer people who come, so it's a lot easier to, to sign people in.
And that's even, that's kind of a better test than the actual town meeting.
Yeah, that would be a, a nice time to use it as well.
So the reason I asked about the turnaround time is.
Yes.
Is it, would it be, Mr. Dean, more appropriate for us not to move it tonight but wait for the attorneys to look at the contract? Or would you rather us move it contingent on the attorney's approval of the contract?
Uh, I, yeah, I, it's up to the board.
I prefer the attorneys to see the contract.
Before we make a motion. I, I agree. And then if that's, as soon as they can do that, let's put it back on the agenda, we don't want to hold it up. But I think I'm more comfortable making the motion once the attorneys have read the contract.
Okay.
So this would be the contract just for the rental?
Correct.
Got it. And if we're renting, we may want to do it just for the town election, not for deliberative session.
Because you have to pay it twice.
Because we wouldn't want to pay the extra fee.
If you just said your, your name and address for the record, please.
It's Bill Murphy, I'm 18 Oak Street. Just as, just as, because I mentioned at the beginning, was power issues. So I would say if you're going to the budget stuff, and I'm not sure if the gym's actually on the generator, but purchase a UPS system that can handle the system to keep it running and maybe just, because that power consumption is probably low, I'll put it in the generator. So there is actually, it doesn't have to be any power interruption.
Oh, that's a good thought.
Just a thought.
Thank you. Appreciate all good thoughts, thank you. So how long do you think that would take to have the, the attorneys review the contract?
I don't think very long. I'll look at the people that are heading this up to get an idea from them.
So we meet twice in August, the 8th and the 22nd?
Mm-hmm.
And obviously you don't have to give the presentation again, we just review the contract and.
Okay. So why don't we get the rental paperwork, Andy, and we'll.
Yeah.
And is that the consensus of the board is to rent for a year and then if we'd like it, put it in the budget?
Yeah, I think that's the best option right now. If you have one request, and that's for Ms. Navoyeck, when we, at our last August meeting, if you can come in and remind people of the identification pieces that they need to have if they're a new registrant, just to, you know, roll it up.
Sorry, I don't, I can't hear you.
If somebody comes in to register for the first time at the polls and they come see you.
Yes.
When we have our last meeting in August, can you come in and just go over that so the public knows?
Yeah, we can go through a whole demo.
Yeah.
We can get, I would even say maybe Brenda.
Yeah.
To show how the actual polling pad works so all of you can have an opportunity to try it out.
Are you speaking of that or the election in September?
Yeah, I'm talking about the election in September.
No, you usually come and do just a quick refresher that there's an election coming up.
Oh, sure. My own PSA, I love this. So thank you, Town of Exeter, and our select board for allowing me to speak upon our upcoming primary in September. To register to vote, you can register to vote anytime our town office is open. So please come to the clerk's office, fill out a voter registration form. You would, you are required to bring a form of identification, so that is a photo ID. You are required to bring a form of proof of domicile, so that is where you sleep at night, not where you get your mail, because we don't live in mailboxes. And your proof of citizenship, which you need your naturalization papers, birth certificate or a passport, because a real ID does not give us proof of citizenship. And I realize the state goes through the process, Secretary of State and our laws do not allow it. And then finally, your proof of age. So your photo ID would have your age on that. We also have supervisor sessions scheduled. I believe the next one is at the end of August, between the 30th and September 7th is the last day that we can host a change of name, address, et cetera. I also want people to know, May 31st was the last day you can change your party affiliation. So if you are a party affiliated in a party you don't want to vote for, I am sorry, we by law, you can scream at me, you can rant and rave, you can pound your feet. Sadly, because of the law, I am unable to make that change, so.
But we ask that people don't treat.
But we still want you to come and vote, yes. You can write in, you can do whatever you need to do, but sadly, if you are registered to a party that you don't want to vote, you get that ballot that day. Did I miss anything?
No, that was very good.
Great, and thank you.
Thank you.
Please vote.
Thank you, thank all of you. We'll see you back next month.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, next we have.
Can I ask?
Please, go ahead, yeah.
While we're still on the subject.
Yeah.
How are we going to address, how are you going to address that for the budget process? Are you going to put it on for 2023? Are you going to put it on for 2023?
Yeah, any, any costs that would be in addition to what we are initially seeding with this, you know, with this year's budget, we would add to next year's budget as well.
Okay.
Okay, I think. I just, are we, are we going to have to vote if we're going to try to buy them? We want to wait a year. So if we don't.
No, we'd go on the next.
We're going to lease them. But if we, if we decide next year to buy them, we're going to be in the same situation where we could put it on, in the budget, but we don't vote until March.
Right.
So we wouldn't be able to buy them until.
So if you put it, if you put it in the budget line for '23.
Yeah.
And it goes through the BRC, comes to the board, goes to the voters, the voters approve the budget, it's in the budget for '23 to buy them for the elections in '24.
The only decision we need to make is whether we're going to buy them or we're going to continue to lease them.
I mean, this doesn't make sense to.
The calendar is a little askew because we haven't, we haven't tried them and will not have tried them until the town election.
That's a conundrum.
No, that is, no, that's right.
We can think about how to work that out, but that's, that's sort of where we're at.
So you may end up looking at leasing them for two years.
Perhaps.
But I still think, I think overall, I think, you know, so that you're not using the ARPA funds or as much money from the ARPA funds and you, and you are giving the staff the opportunity to try them out. I mean, if we bought, they could decide they don't like them. The voters may not like, you know.
I love the idea of a lease. But so how, what's the year the ARPA funds have to be used by? 2024? No?
Committed by 2024.
Committed by.
Spent by 2026.
Okay. So we still have that up if necessary? Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. So next, we're going to revisit, we had public comment last week from a resident that brought up some concerns on the Salem Street project, and a town engineer happened to be here, so he weighed in. We asked it to be on the agenda as a discussion item. Mr. Dean, and I don't see the town engineer here. Is anybody from staff here prepared to speak on this?
Yeah, the Public Works Director is here. Jennifer Perry.
Director Perry, good evening.
Good evening, everybody. Jennifer Perry, Public Works Director. Yes, after the meeting last week, Paul Vlasic, our town engineer, did work with Hoyle Tanner, the design engineers, to look at a, an accommodation to not change the location of the edge of pavement along the drive entrances on, at 14 Oak Street. And they were able to come up with a way to do that, still keeping the 12-foot, two 12-foot widths at the intersection of Oak Street and Salem Street. You'll see in your packet, there's a sketch. I don't know how well it shows up for you, but I do have a copy in front of me that shows at the, if you will, say, as Salem Street approaches from the right side of the page into Oak Street, it's 24 feet wide, and it's a 12-foot wide lane on that western-bound Salem Street lane, okay? Oak Street, 18 Oak Street is, can you see it highlighted in yellow? Okay.
Yes.
So you can see that. Then there would be a taper down to 11 feet so that by the time you get to the first driveway, it's, the edge of pavement is back to where it is today. And then for the second driveway, the same. The edge of pavement is where it is, where it is today. So it's a taper for a short distance. I believe it was 1 to 25 ratio taper rate, so over 25 feet, it gets it from 12 feet to 11 feet. Lane width.
Any questions from the board? I know we have, Mr. Murphy, I don't know if you want to comment or not, but before you do, any questions from the board? Sir, did you want to?
So, as I addressed to you guys, I have to say my name again.
Bill Murphy.
Yeah, Bill Murphy, thank you. I was concerned, one, maybe because my driveway affects the cost, but two, the traffic flow. So I didn't go into the full detail about what the road, you know, is because it wasn't on the agenda. But part of it is, I'm not sure why this pushing where it's not detrimental to the project, as it was brought up last week, that they're still trying to widen that point of the intersection where you're still creating this wide funnel for people who, if you're going in the neighborhood, you're, you know it's slow, you know it goes easy. When you approach that intersection and you don't know where you're going, you're paying attention to the phone, and you see a big wide opening, you're barreling through. We have a lot of people who just go through that stop sign, or if they do stop, they're full speed into the road until they get to the end of my driveway and they're slamming down the brakes as they realize there's a house in front of them and that they made the wrong turn. The other part is the sidewalk that coming up from Salem Street East comes to my corner. It's basically just a 90-degree sidewalk for people to proceed onto the new sidewalk they're putting on Oak Street. Having that little bit of a berth is going to put that pedestrian on the sidewalk when that person, in view of, before they're actually in the road. So, and it's going to give you more sidewalk space for the pedestrian to be, let's say, a family of five can actually stand in the sidewalk off the roads completely before they cross. For the safety part of that. The other two things that, you know, we do use that, as the road sits, a car can be completely off the road and not be on my property. So when my neighbors come over, we all get off the road, so kids come around their bikes, they're going by, delivery trucks and stuff like that. We try not to block that road and to get off the road. So it's literally, we're, you know, now they're trying to try and pull off, and I'm trying not to put my fence back up to make it more welcoming in the neighborhood. We've been doing a lot of work to, you know, create more of a community feeling to the house. And the other one is I'm concerned because we have a older Japanese maple. Now that that road's tapering off right into that tree, it's going to be gone with the bus, trucks go by, the utility trucks, the box trucks, they're all going to be, you know, driving into that. So it's like, that's another part of my concern. But I think trying to eliminate, eliminating the funnel effect and actually just make them think before they even approach the intersections, wait, should I even be going in there? It's a small T. I mean, people are, for width buys to turn into, you're coming from Oak Street and taking a left, or you're coming straight in from Salem Street. So it's very rare anybody's taking a right-hand turn off of Oak and into my neighborhood that this wide, barren road needs to be there.
Thank you.
That's it.
Can you, can you address any, any or all of those concerns, please?
I will do my best.
Okay.
I know that the design recommendation from the design engineers is that you do maintain the same width through the intersection, that when drivers approach an intersection and they see a change that is problematic. And so I have to say that the design engineers are making that recommendation, and the town engineers also agrees with that. The radius that's being used, and this is getting pretty technical, but typically, we would have a 25-foot radius at a, at a 90-degree turn like that. Only a 10-foot, 10-foot radius will be used in this particular location to minimize the amount of encroachment that occurs. So they've tried to accommodate a minimization of that. And as far as the location of the sidewalk crossings, there is a sidewalk, I think you can see it on the sketch or the plan, that's coming up Salem Street from east to west on the, it's on the northerly side of Salem Street. It's a five-foot wide sidewalk. It crosses Oak Street, and that's where that 10-foot radius is. And then it turns and connects to the sidewalk that is on the southern end of Oak Street. There isn't a sidewalk that continues anywhere else. So that's, that's why that has to be there too, those two crossings. I know that we didn't add sidewalks everywhere. That was not the intent. We were very selective in the locations of sidewalks because it just was cost prohibitive. So this was a part that had been early design decisions as far as locations of sidewalks and crosswalks.
Thank you.
And I think the only other, no, I think that covers it.
What about the concerns of, of his tree and the, and the plows? Is that?
I, I honestly can't say I have a good visual of that tree, but I can say that a 12-inch change, and I'm not sure if it's going to be 12 inches at that location, but it's, it sounds like it's a 12-inch to 1-foot distance, shouldn't make a big difference for an existing tree, but I, we can certainly go out and take a look at that.
Yeah, because I'd hate to destroy the property, especially a tree like that.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah. I think we already had to take down a label tree that was on the town property because the town had to deal with it. So we've already removed the tree, so we're just trying to maintain it.
So we can, we can look into the, into the tree?
Yes, we can look into that.
Mr. Murphy, did you have anything else? I know you raised your hand.
Yep. So I just want to ask the problematic with, this road is, been a road for 100 years plus. It hasn't been a problem. It's never been a problem. I mean, some of it's coming towards my side because they're also shifting the road to, towards my road from the other side, so it's coming a little less on the neighbor of 16 Oak Street. But yeah, it's just mostly the history. It's never been a problem. It's never been an issue. So, thank you.
Thoughts from the board?
I mean, I think this is the best compromise as of right now that exists. I know it's not perfect, but I'm glad that they were able to go back and make adjustments that seem like it's better than what it was before in terms of spacing. Yeah. I mean, you know, it's just the, the nature of the beast, I guess, is trying to find the, the fine balance.
I mean, I agree. I, you know, I want to make sure the private property is not compromised, and that's why I'm glad you came before us last week. We wanted to look into that. But to your point, I mean, you know, it's, it's an old town, and a lot of these streets are old, and a lot of the neighborhoods are old, but, you know, we have pressing infrastructure needs that, you know, may require, I mean, it's like anything, right? You have an old house, just because it's always been like that, you need upgrades with the electrical and the, you may have to change things. And I think that the Public Works Department, from Director Perry down to the engineer and all of the Public Works employees, do their best to make sure that we can provide improved and needed infrastructure for our citizens without compromising private property. And, you know, I feel very secure in Director Perry and Mr. Vlasic, you know, looking out to make sure that they do their very best to complete a project that's much needed and was voted on by the voters without compromising private property. So I would agree with you, Selectwoman Rantrell. Any other feedback?
I don't want to repeat what has already been said, but I also want to thank you for coming in and being patient. This is, this is how we can all work together to do what we can do, to make things a little bit better if possible. So thank you for taking the time to come in, too.
Thank you. I appreciate it. All I have to do is ask.
And we can listen and try to do what we can, try to do what we can. And again, the Selectwoman Rantrell said it's not perfect, but it's, you know, thank you for coming in and we do the best that we can, again, to improve the infrastructure first and foremost, but also protect private property. Great, thank you. And Director Perry, thank you and the town engineer for looking into this.
You know, and, and feel free to come by. We're here most Monday nights and.
I see my coach is watching it online.
I know, but you have such helpful suggestions.
You contributed such a nice suggestion to something you didn't, you weren't even here for.
I'm surprised that you haven't pulled onto a committee yet. Seriously, how we end up.
And we have openings on committees and boards. So that happens, and you're the only one in the room. All kidding aside, though, thank you.
I wasn't kidding about the opening.
Director Perry, if we could have you back to the podium on yet another drought update. Not looking good.
No, it's not. Well, actually, probably the easiest thing is if you turn the page, on the second page of my update for this week, you'll see at the top, I have a multi-color graph of the Hague Road Gauge, which is upstream and upstream on the Exeter River in Brentwood. And you can see back when I did this on, I think it was Thursday, that I reached out to Russ to say, I think we need to do a more restrictive water restriction. You can see that the blue line, which is the actual flow, was down, and the number you can see down below, it was 3.42 CFS. The minimum in 2016, when we had the drought, was 2.69 CFS. It's not really statistically significantly different. So I was very concerned with the extreme heat that we were having all last week through the weekend, that going into the weekend with these flows, we would be in a, in a really tough bind, especially if we didn't come back to you for two more weeks. I know we got some rain today, but thunderstorms are not like a long, slow, easy rain where things can get absorbed. The water tends to run right off, and it isn't absorbed into the ground. So even though there are thunderstorms predicted throughout, not throughout the week, but I believe again later this week, there's another day, it's not really enough to, to sustain us. The gauge did jump up this afternoon. I checked it. It was 5.91 CFS at 6 o'clock, but that will come right down over the next couple of days, and will be right back down to the, the 3 CFS level. So I am recommending that we increase the water restriction to a Level 4, which prohibits all landscape watering. It prohibits filling swimming pools greater than 100 gallons in capacity. It prohibits washing of streets, driveways, sidewalks, and other impervious areas, and prohibits washing of vehicles or boats at a non-commercial facility. It does allow for the hand irrigation of crops used by residents. It does allow for sustaining water for, or excuse me, sustaining animal life watering. It allows for commercial car washes, cash crops, farms, flower shops, garden centers, and it can also allow for grass playing turf of recreational fields, golf courses, and grass agricultural fields. And as you may recall, from prior Level 4 restrictions, when we've done this in the past, we have extended, as the state law does allow, the restriction of watering by private property, well, private well owners. The state law does allow for that through RSA 41:11D. So that's my happy report.
Thank you.
But it is, it is concerning. As you can see, that graph really shows we're in a much tougher condition than we were last year at this time, and it's, it's closer to the 2016 level.
Okay.
I will say, I'm never buying shrubberies for, in front of my fence again, because two years in a row, I haven't been able to water them. So I found, you will see, I can't remember the name of the plant, but anyway, drought-resistant and shadiness is what I have there.
Any questions or comments?
No, I just do it. Yeah, I think it's worth having a discussion, a longer-term discussion about water restrictions.
Yeah.
Okay. I would entertain a motion then to escalate the water use restrictions from Level 2 to Level 4 in accordance with the Town of Exeter ordinance 1610, and also extend a restriction of lawn watering to private wells in accordance with Hampshire RSA 41:11D.
So move second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Jennifer. The last discussion item this evening is proposal for a classification study, and Mr. Dean, presumably you and the assistant. Mr. Dean, presumably you and the Assistant Town Manager will be speaking to this?
Yes. This is a proposal that we received from MRI to update 59 union positions and then some union positions. And I'll call on the Assistant Town Manager and she'll come up and explain it.
Great, thank you.
Good evening. So as you guys all know, that the labor market is really challenging. Typically, when you have an organization, you look at your wage classification plans at a minimum of every 10 years, five years is better. The last time that we looked at this was 2014. So even if COVID hadn't happened and the labor market hadn't happened, we would be needing to do this in this timeline. So COVID obviously has made things challenging and the, the labor market is making things even more challenging. And so what we would like to do is work with MRI to review our current wage and classification plan for our non-union members and our SEIU members. And the reason that we're starting there and not including police and fire right now is it's a little bit easier to look at police and fire amongst other towns as apples to apples and oranges to oranges. Every town's DPW department is a little different in what they service, whether they have a water plan or a treatment plan or, you know, any of those things. And so we are also seeing with such an influx of money through the federal government, through infrastructure projects, we're seeing a lot of turnaround in our labor force through our SEIU members. So we would like to get a handle on where we stand on that, and we feel like this is the best way to do that. Like I said, we haven't done it since 2014, so it's, it's time. It is, it is a large undertaking, which is why we're asking to contract it out with MRI. I would be working on it with them. And we are suggesting that ARPA funds be used to support this because to do 75 employees, which is 50 non-union and 25 union, it is going to be an estimated cost of $30,000. That isn't in your packet. We got that number today and after more conversations with Russ and I, we spoke with MRI this afternoon. So wanting to have a discussion, hear thoughts, hear feedback, hear what everybody thinks.
So this was one of the board's collective goals and objectives during the goal-setting session back in April. I think all five of us strongly encouraged both you and Mr. Dean to begin working on this. And I, I think that it's right for contracting out to municipal resources and to work with you on this because one person can't.
Right.
Can I just ask for clarification? The $30,000, is that the equivalent to Option C?
It is. It's Option C. And what that does, because it hasn't been done since 2014, it reviews our process, making sure that we're continually, continuously doing things in an appropriate manner. A lot of things have changed since 2014, but not only that, a lot of things have changed since the last two years. So we need to see if we're staying relevant and, and providing a good system.
Comments from the board?
How, what, how are we going out, or going to choose comparative towns?
I'm going to let Russ answer that because we haven't got to talk about, I sort of know, but.
Yeah. So that's, that's usually part of the study, is that they will suggest a list of comparable communities. I would imagine that this would work the same way, that we would have been put into that process and be able to come to an agreement on what we believe should be the comparable towns. But we won't go far from the seacoast area. I mean, we'll, we'll look at Portsmouth, we'll look at Dover, we'll look at Rochester, we'll look at places that are around us. And then we'll probably look at maybe a community like Londonderry, Bedford, you know, for, for other comparables, just to give a few.
And some of the deep, when we look specifically at SEIU, we may have to make sure that we're picking communities that match similar to what we have as function. So the non-union piece of it may be different towns versus the DPW piece of it. That's not official yet, but we would just want to make sure that we're, we're looking at communities that deal with what we have.
Now, that's what I.
Is that what you're getting at?
Yeah. No, that's what I thought would, would be of assistance because the town is exactly alike and the populations are different and the economics are different and the mileage is different. That's one of the impacts. Okay.
Selectwoman Belanger?
So we did this in 2014. Is this about the same approach?
We had, yeah, we had a classification and compensation analysis done in 2014, which is the, is the basis for our current personnel system that we have in place. So it would be similar to that. But we would also take a look at, you know, how we grade positions and we would be looking at it in a more holistic manner.
Good.
So we would definitely be kind of looking under the hood at our personnel system and whether it's working in its current format, or whether they would recommend another type of way to, to go about grading our positions.
And also looking at job descriptions, making sure that they are.
That was a really important piece to, to me and to Russ is that Option C does review the job descriptions because a lot of things have changed. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Selectwoman Rantiole?
Do you have any questions?
Selectwoman Cowan?
I don't have any questions either.
Any other comments?
Nope.
I mean, personally, I think Option C meets the criteria of what we've expressed in prior meetings and our goal-setting session. And I think you're going to get the bigger bang for the buck.
Yeah.
And I think overall, it's going to help our town move forward in a more competitive way and attract the talent that we deserve to have here.
Thank you.
So I would be in favor of Option C and then open it up to.
I will just add one thing, that we are going to try to be as transparent as we can, well, as always, but throughout the whole process, in that what the study gives us back, we don't know that we'll be able to afford it in a single year or multiple years, and that's when we're going to start to come back to you. So I don't want any residents that are listening at home thinking, we're going to come back with this big giant number, we're going to, you know, it's all going to be looked at, reviewed, and see what's manageable.
Good point. Thank you.
Yeah. Because the turnaround is four months on this, is it still four months on this one? Yeah. So it's not really going to make it back for budget for 2020, '23?
There's a possibility that we could potentially put it in as an HR line for reclassification, but I would agree that it is most likely not going to be in the next budget cycle.
But it could assist us in other ways, obviously.
Well, absolutely. I just, I was following up, but the point was.
So Mr. Dean, you need a motion to authorize $30,000 from ARPA funds to, for the undertaking of the.
Is it 30 or 35?
It was, it's 30.
It was 35 when we originally were considering doing all three unions. And I think at this point, we'd like to start with SEIU.
Okay. Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to authorize expenditure of $30,000 from ARPA funds to undertake the classification study proposal from MRI, Option C, and also authorize the town manager to sign into the contract.
Second.
Motion to second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Thank you both. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving into regular business, Madam Clerk, we have one solar exemption.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve a solar exemption for Mount 19, Lot 16, Unit 10, in amount of $8,000 for the tax year 2023.
Second.
Motion to second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Permits and approvals. First, we have a memo in our packet from our IT Director, Andy Swanson, requesting ARPA fund expenditure request. Mr. Dean, did you want to briefly describe this?
Yeah, this is actually something that we have money, we have already expended, $1,577.24 for splash top service. That was related to COVID. And then also Zoom for $2,998.90. That's been paid in 2022. And the request from IT is to take those funds and move them, reallocate them to ARPA funds because they were directly related to COVID.
Seems straightforward. Any questions or comments? Okay. And seeing none, I would entertain a motion to authorize reallocation of $4,576.14 from the Internet Services expenditure to ARPA funds.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. And we have a memo from Deputy Tax Collector describing an owner of, of a co-op who passed away with an outstanding water sewer bill. Select Board earlier had authorized a writ of possession to the co-op and the building has since been demolished. And the request is to abate the balance. And it's total balance, including seven quarterly bills, the oldest of which is from July 2020. The total request, including interest, to be abated is $1,694.52.
62.
62, I'm sorry. Any questions or comments, Mr. Dean? Did I miss anything?
No, you got it.
Okay, then I would entertain a motion to abate the outstanding water and sewer bill for unit, is there a map and lot here that I'm missing?
No.
This is for Unit A16 for the Exeter Hampton Co-op.
So I would entertain a motion to abate the outstanding water and sewer bill for Unit A16, the Exeter Hampton Co-op, for the seven quarterly outstanding bills from July 2020 to present, total of $1,694.62.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. And last but not least, we have the application from the Parks and Rec Department for the annual Powder Keg Chili and Beer Festival to be held on October 1st, 2022, in Swayze Parkway. And Mr. Dean, as far as we know, the Parkway will be open, and, and my question is having to do with the siphons?
Yes. And we, we have had a pre-bid meeting for the siphons project on July 20th, and I will check in with Mr. Barubi about the revised timeline when I get a chance to talk with him in more detail.
Okay.
But we're anticipating it being open for this event.
Any questions or comments? It's always a good time.
Other than I'll plug that you can contact Parks and Rec if you'd like to volunteer for this event. It's a lot of fun every year.
It is a lot of fun. And you get a free t-shirt, and I believe.
And a little.
You get a little.
Glasses if you want.
At the end, right.
Yeah.
Nice advertisement. Just out of curiosity, are they going to do it the same way Mr. Dean split over two? Yeah, that worked out well last week.
Yeah, two sessions. Chili will be back, and then there's going to be a Kids Zone as well. And the other note I have on it is comparable cups for beer and chili.
Okay, great. So then I would entertain a motion to approve the special event application from the Exeter Parks and Recreation Department for the Powder Keg Beer and Chili Festival to be held at Swayze Parkway on October 1st, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Mr. Dean, Town Manager's report, please.
Yes, just a few things tonight. One is that I want to let the board know that Riya Khan has been appointed as our new School Resource Officer. So she'll be taking over that role in the fall, and that's from the Police Department. Nice promotion for her, and she'll do a great job out there, I'm sure. The National Night Out is August 2nd. Just a reminder that that's coming up relatively soon here. And then the other thing I have is the second tranche of ARPA funds. We just got word today from the state that award letters will be going out, and we should have that second tranche of funds within the next couple of weeks.
Terrific. Thank you. Select Board Committee reports. I know we just met last week. We may not have many. Selectwoman Rantiole?
No, I was unable to attend the site walk that would take place on Thursday or Wednesday of last week.
Swayze?
Yeah, they were checking out some trees that needed to be tended to and a couple of other things. Other than that, I just wanted to give a shout out to the tune-in on Tuesday events that have been taking place. I've stopped by a couple of times, and they seem to be going quite well when the weather behaves.
Terrific. Thank you. Selectwoman Cowan?
I don't have anything, but I did want to bring up cooling stations or centers or something for residents who may be suffering through this heat and wondering if there is anything available or places to direct people if they need to go to cool off.
I don't know that we've done those before, but let me look into it. I don't know if the, the senior center is the first place that comes to my mind as far as something that, you know, would fit that description. Meals on Wheels, I know, takes over that building for a decent part of the day. So we can, we can talk about that and see if there's an opportunity somewhere.
That would be great.
Just a thought down the road, once, you know, obviously not for this summer, but could there be room in 10 Hampton Road at some point if there's, I don't know if there's any room that could be designated for folks to go just to cool off or?
Okay. We can look into that.
And maybe work with the library and just a couple of.
Yeah. We also asked the question during, like, the ice storm when people had power outages for such a long time. And the Red Cross did come in, but they managed. They don't really actually serve meals or anything like that. So that was done through the, with the schools. But, yeah, the cooling station and both of those are things that we need to find a solution to.
Yeah, I'm going to ask a silly follow-up question on this because that is a perfect idea. We're getting warmer and warmer. Do we have any buildings that have generators that would keep, keep the cooling going or heat going?
Yeah, we do. We have a generator for this building. We have a generator for the Public Safety Building.
Yeah, I meant for this purpose.
Oh, for this.
Hey, the senior center or Hampton Road, just something to keep in, in mind because I think Molly's point and Julie's point is a really good idea. That's something we.
Okay. We have a department head meeting coming up this Wednesday, so we'll put that question on the table, see what people can come up with.
Yeah, thank you.
You know, maybe have James or Chief Wilking weigh in on, you know, other ideas. Because I think that's right. If, if we lose power, whether people need air conditioning or they need heat in the wintertime.
And we'll need a generator. Likely.
Okay, good thought. Thank you. Selectwoman Gilman?
All of my meetings happen in the same week.
Actually caught you on TV twice.
Oh, thanks. Facilities Advisory Committee met, and we shortened the scope of projects and the facilities condition assessment. That RFP is going to go out as soon as the edits were made as a new RFP, not as an amendment to one. So, and we've added some companies that, to ask them to respond. What we ended up doing was prioritizing the buildings that we want to have the full assessment of, which includes the, you know, predictable town office, town office building, Parks and Rec, or 10 Hampton Road. And I don't remember the other ones. But that was pretty much what we did for that. Heritage Commission met, and one of the things that we're doing is, we had put together, or spent two years looking at this Park Street Heritage Neighborhood and how to define it, how to, why we wanted to do it, what we wanted to accomplish with it. And surveys were made and public meetings were held. And ultimately, we decided not to go forward with it because it just wasn't popular by, there was no popular demand. So our discussion was, okay, we have all this information, postcard surveys, handbook, you know, et cetera, et cetera, pictures, survey. And we want to put it all together so that if at some point another neighborhood decides they wanted to try this, they can see the efforts that we put through. My problem is that that's easy to do, to put everything in a box. I don't know where it goes because I don't, I don't know where anything the Heritage Commission does go. Somewhere in the Planning, Planning or Building Department, I would just like to be able to refer somebody to wherever our communications go. to wherever our communications go. So that was part of the discussion. The DAR wants to put up a plaque at the Winter Street Cemetery, just to commemorate the Revolutionary War soldiers that are interred there, and they've asked, but we haven't heard anything else from them about it. We talked about the watering trough becoming a planter. We are not convinced that the pad out front is the right place for it, because there's already so much happening there between the Armed Services Monument on one side, pathway ramp, and that pad that was built for the bus shelter is accessible. It's an accessible pad, and I thought that the, I and the other commissioners agreed with me that the, putting the planter there was going to get in the way of somebody who wanted to access the bench. So then we thought about, you know, where else can we put it that is visible? You know, we brought up Townhouse Common, maybe Foundage Park, but they're really not out there where a horse trough would have been. So the recommendation is actually to put it in our, the right-of-way in front of the house next door, 12 Front Street. So that, that's the recommendation we'd like to make. I'm not sure which body is actually making that decision. Is it us?
That's the board?
Yeah.
Yep.
The other part of it is that what we've, what's been donated to us is the actual trough, but not the base that it was standing on. So it's not as low to the ground as it seems. And so we decided to, we would reach out to the Academy because they're having different building instruction, and they have lots of materials that are currently available, ready to go, and asked if they would donate, if they had something to donate to us. And Mr. Layton, the Facilities Director, was more than happy to help us.
Great.
Once we know what size we need and where we're gonna put it. So, and then the HDC met, we had two.
So I'm sorry, do you need that on the agenda? I mean, if you, if you're making the recommendation, we could put that on the agenda for August?
Yeah, give me a couple of weeks, because I want to get the dimensions.
Do the 22nd, Mr. Dean. Is that enough time?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And then the HDC met, and we had two cases, both of which went very simply. The boathouse, not the PEA's boathouse, but the condos that are behind 163, I think, Water Street. It's a long stretch of four or five garage-like doors. They want to replace all their windows, and they're doing it with a better product, and the historical significance of the shed at Dormers up there is not very deep, so it's gonna be a nice update for that. And the other one was a garage for a house that has had so many different dates, periods of architecture added onto it, that it was hard for them to choose one to use as a reference. But they're very thorough, both these applications made it very easy. Our meetings are quite short now, because our applications are thorough. So that one is going ahead too. And then anything else I have to say is, if people are interested in what the governor's been vetoing or passing, you can look on the generalcourt.state, or gencourt.state.nh.us, and there's a button that calls up, comes up, and it says chaptered law, chaptered versions, chaptered law. And if you click on that, it shows you all the bills in the list that the governor has signed. And you can click on the number to see what was actually, they're listed by title, but you can look and see what the actual legislation was. And then below that is the calendars, and the latest calendar shows you what's been vetoed. There's only seven vetoes this year, which just makes our veto day very short. That's good. And that's it.
Wonderful, thank you. Selectwoman Belanger?
One meeting this week. Actually, no, I don't have any. No, I do, I'm sorry. My brain's not working so well tonight. Friday, July 22nd, we had a work session for the Housing Advisory Committee, and it was just a planning session for the walking route, which I was gonna give tonight, but they've altered it, so until Mr. Sharples, our town planner, is actually working on that. And then Exeter TV is going to help promote it.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't have any meetings, but Mr. Glawacki has started working on the promo specials that he's gonna run on Exeter TV to try to get the more recruitment for boards and committees, and all the committee and board chairs will do a quick PSA. I did one on behalf of the Select Board on Wednesday, just giving an overview of civic engagement and the rewards of volunteering and encouraging people to watch all of the specials and asking folks to reach out not only to the chairs of boards and committees, but to us, for Town Manager's Office, if they had any questions, and urged folks to volunteer.
Thank you.
So it's a good video, went well. And thank you, Bob, for spearheading this. We have one piece of correspondence from the Richie McFarland Children's Center acknowledging a receipt of $2,500 for quarter one. And reviewing the board calendar, we'll reconvene on August 8th, August 22nd, and a special Tuesday, September 6th. And with that, I'd ask if there's any other, any other discussion items, anyone from the board? If there are none, I do ask that we, I do ask somebody to move, going into non-public very quickly, under RSA 91A:32A.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second, Madam Clerk?
Selectwoman Ratiola?
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
Selectwoman Belanger?
Aye.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair?
Aye, unanimous, we'll be moving into non-public. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAA 16 and can be found on Channel 13, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune in to our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune in to our other content as well.